The time is nine, uh, [cough]. Cut. Let's try that again. The time is 5:45. I'm going to call to adjourn this meeting of the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Potts.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
And Mayor Bowers. God bless you.
I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Potts and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve the final agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here. Oh, yes. Hi.
Councilmember Potts.
Here. Yes.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye.
We're going to get all the kinks out before the regular meeting tonight.
We're not used to doing this on a Monday, people.
Yeah, Monday is throwing us all off, I think. Ex parte communications. Member Donahue, do you have any to report?
Well, I have met with Kiva, one of the potential businesses affected by our decision, and East Bay Therapeutics.
Okay, Member Martinez.
I have met with representatives from Kiva, Rochambeau, East Bay Therapeutics, and Versagenics.
I have met with folks from Kiva, Rochambeau, East Bay Therapeutics, Kikoko, Golden State, Versagenics.
Sundstorm.
Sundstorm, and Muni Services.
Vice Mayor Medina.
It'd be really fun if I had a longer list, just like [laughs]. Kiva and East Bay Therapeutics.
Member Potts.
Kiva and East Bay Therapeutics.
Okay. All right, on to public comment. We'll take public comment for items that are not on this agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to our study session. Chad, study session regarding the initial cannabis business tax rates for the city of Emeryville.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Chad Smalley, Economic Development and Housing Manager, here to quickly do a real brief presentation, hitting on the high points of the staff report, to talk about our upcoming Measure S and the initial tax rates. So we're going to go through a brief background, talk a little bit about the current market environment for cannabis generally, a profile of the industry in Emeryville as it exists today, some strategic considerations that are outlined in the staff report, and close with some discussion questions, and hopefully from this, we'll get some direction from you, and we can return future meeting date with an action. So by way of background, in December of last year was the initial direction to, after polling showed strong support for cannabis business tax, to place a cannabis tax on the November 18 ballot. And then, on July, we polled again. Recall, after the June election, the support was still strong, and the city council reaffirmed that direction and asked us to come back with different options for the ordinance, different ways that the rates could be set and changed, potentially in the future. So three options were presented to the city council, some of which would require a supermajority to raise, but not to lower, or a supermajority either way, or a simple majority to set and change the tax rates, excuse me. And the city council selected the option that required a simple majority. By voter resolution, you can set the cannabis tax rates, you can set them at different levels for different types of businesses, and you can, and future councils could change that at any point with a simple majority vote. So the current market environment, most of you all are familiar with this, but it's an emerging market. It's newly legal for adult-use customers, and there's a substantial amount of really significant regulatory change that's happening as we open up this marketplace. In California, owing to our history and the medical usage that was first legalized, there's a really strong informal market that exists today, and this has presented a challenge. On the one hand, there are cost pressures that are put onto the formal market, the new entrance into the legitimate market, and then there's sales, there's demand pressure coming from the persistent illicit market at the same time, and this is proving to be difficult. There's a number of studies we cited in the staff report that relate to, you know, folks saying that as many as one in five transactions are happening in the informal marketplace still, and even though it's available, and this has been a challenge for the new industry, the newly legitimate industry. In Emeryville, we have seven permitted businesses. You named them all earlier. We have two storefront retailers, three manufacturers, one delivery-only service, and one distributor. There's also been consistent and very strong interest, continued interest, beyond these seven folks. Pretty much every three or four days, we get an inquiry from somebody in the cannabis industry, large, small, startups, all sorts of different kinds of businesses in different segments of the market that are interested in locating here. Some of those conversations have sort of paused at the moment because of price sensitivity with some of the larger operators that are interested in coming here, but some of them are continuing. The restriction, the only thing that's really put a drag on the industry and the interest in Emeryville at this point is the lack of availability of property in the zones where non-retail services are allowed, and so consequently, we aren't really marketing the city of Emeryville to the cannabis industry and trying to attract businesses because we have nothing to sell. There's very little that's there. We continue to represent ourselves well when we get an opportunity with the industry, and generally, the interest in Emeryville has been largely through word of mouth. Folks know that this is a good place to do business, and they appreciate the small size, the nimble nature of the city, and the fact that we handhold these businesses and have a very clear process. So by all accounts, it's been very successful so far. As we talk about setting initial rates for the tax, there are some things, strategic considerations. These are outlined further in the staff report, and I'll talk to them here. I spend some time discussing how different kinds of firms have different levels of sensitivity to their locational decisions, in particular to local tax. Firms that are storefront retail, by necessity, need to locate somewhat proximate to their market, and they need a location that's accessible and visible, preferably, and so they are the most sensitive in terms of, least sensitive to taxes because they need to be where the market is. Further down the spectrum, we have delivery services. Delivery services don't really need to be on high-traffic corridors or have a very obvious retail presence, but as a matter of practicality, they need to be close to the market that they're trying to serve. Then, at the other end of the spectrum, we have manufacturers, and distribution and manufacturers. These businesses really can be anywhere in the state. There is some consideration to being close to your customers. If you're a distributor, you want to be centrally located so you can get to your dispensaries, but manufacturing really can happen anywhere in the state, and so those folks are the most sensitive to tax and have the ability to make a locational decision based on tax, on finding the lowest tax jurisdiction. The other consideration is that we're in a competitive market for some of these types of businesses. There are communities in our immediate neighbors are in the 5% to 10% range. They've set taxes at that level for adult use. Berkeley goes down to 2.5% for medical use. We don't distinguish here, in our ordinance, whether it's medical or adult use, but if you go further out, and some of the companies, when I'm talking to these firms that are interested in locating here, the larger ones and the very sophisticated ones, they are citing places like Santa Rosa and West Sacramento, and some of them, Los Angeles. And some of these places have other barriers to entry. Los Angeles has a bureaucratic problem at the moment, but their taxes are very low for distribution and manufacturing, some as low as 0% in the case of Santa Rosa for certain kinds of operators. And so this is the competitive environment we find ourselves in for those businesses that don't have to be right here in the Bay Area. They can be somewhere nearby, and they are able to take advantage of lower tax regimes than some of these other communities. I mentioned this earlier, there's downward pressure is being created on these tax rates at both the state level and local level because of the persistence of the illicit market and because of the cost of complying with the legal market. It's eating into profitability of these companies when they have to retool for packaging, when they have to change the testing regime, they have to send all of the product through. This has been, this has been difficult for some of them to cope with. The other consideration is the timing of when you establish rates, what they are, and the fact that you have the flexibility in the future, as the way the ordinance is currently written, to change it. This market is in disequilibrium now. It doesn't, there's a lot of things that don't make sense. There's a lot of, there's a lack of legitimate product in some cases. There's a very low number of retail outlets relative to other states that have legalized. In California, we are an order of magnitude lower than the number of retail outlets on a per 100,000 population basis of Colorado or Oregon, Washington. All those places have more. These companies are in the startup phase by definition. Many of these folks have, that are running these businesses, have a history with cannabis and have been in some form of the business for a while, but for these new adult-use manufacturing companies, they're essentially startups. The full potential of the market hasn't been realized yet, and so these companies, they're pretty lean. They don't have a whole lot of employees necessarily, but the ones that are well-positioned to capture the new market are going to grow, and as they add people, they will become more dependent on their location if their labor force is specialized. That is a bigger driver for business locational decisions in almost anything. If the people are not very replaceable or easily or cheaply replaceable, companies will tend to stay put. We see a lot of companies, not in cannabis, that move here because their employees are moving to the East Bay in search of cheaper housing. So this is sort of an example. These companies today, though, don't have quite the stickiness to a location because they don't have, they haven't built their workforce up to its full potential yet. So that could suggest that starting low, at least initially, in order to allow the market to get through a period of disequilibrium, to get the illicit market more under control than it is now, to allow the companies to adapt to the regulatory cost pressures, and as they grow and take advantage of that, then perhaps step into a higher rate as they become more dependent on this location for their business. We've talked about, and the ordinance provides you with the flexibility to set different rates, excuse me, for different types of businesses, and so it might make sense to set differential rates that are lower for the kinds of businesses that you want, that we don't have represented here today, because we'd like to attract them. If, to the extent those transactions are happening within the city, between different pieces of the supply chain, this is good for the city. It's good for tax revenue, but it's also, it's also just good to create a cluster because , like, businesses use similar labor pool, they use similar inputs, and it makes them all stronger as a result, which is why we see that phenomenon happen in biotech, where there's clusters of biotech, or semiconductors, or any of these industries. And so right now, we don't have any extraction companies, and that's the raw material for manufacturer of many edibles. We don't have a testing lab, and testing is required by every, all of the products are required to be tested. So currently, for our manufacturers that are here, they're sending their product outside of Emeryville and paying that business, and that business is realizing revenue for testing products that are made here. It'd be nice to have that here, and perhaps setting a rate that would incent one of those companies to locate here would be a way of doing that. So we have a series of discussion questions, but you can, you can tell where we're really aiming for is we're trying to get direction on what the city council would like to do with this rate setting. We, I'm suggesting that maybe the starting point is to talk about what you would like the industry to mean for the city, how, if you would like it to have a place commensurate with our presence in other industries, or if it's just something we want to accommodate. Is, are you prepared to set a rate in advance of passage, and the measure would be anticipated to pass, it's polled very well. The industry is asked at the prior council meeting items on this topic, they need certainty. Many of them are in expansion mode or would like to be in expansion mode, but have to consider what the tax regime will be and make their plans accordingly. The different categories of businesses that you could set different rates for are listed there. I do want to point out storefront retail is somewhat unique in that we selected those businesses through a competitive process that heavily weighted community benefits, and so those two storefront retailers that we do have already have conditions on their operating permit that require them to contribute. In one case, 1% of gross receipts, 70% of which comes to the city, and in the other case, 2% of gross receipts, 1% of which, the 50% of which comes to the city, and the balance of those go to community groups that are working in Emeryville, and that is a condition of their permit, so they, before they can be renewed to operate another year, they'll have to evidence that those transactions have occurred, along with a bunch, a host of other things as well, including volunteer time and different capital improvements and other kinds of support. So that's something that I just want to put a pin in because they're effectively paying a 2% of gross now, or will be, as they go, as they ramp up operations. And then finally, did we miss anything? Is there anything else that you want us to consider as we embark upon this new industry? It's an exciting time. It's really, it's been really interesting to see the industry develop. The people are awesome. I've talked to all of the businesses, and so they're aware of these discussions, they know, they knew when they came here that we would be talking about taxes at some point, and so that time has arrived. And so with that, I'll answer any questions you have for me, otherwise we can, we can go into the discussion questions.
Clarifying questions, Member Donahue.
I assume that this business, no matter what it is, would be like normal business, meaning sales tax for retailers and gross receipts tax for everyone else. And for manufacturers, gross receipts could be a good tax for our city, so.
Yes.
Maybe you might give us an example of what that would mean.
Well, if you, in terms of, so currently, everyone's paying 1/10th of 1% of gross receipts now. My estimates, which are only estimates, and I have to qualify this every time, my estimates is that for the industry as a whole, they're, when they get ramped up to full ramp-up, it maybe takes a year to get all of the operations online or so, that they are, there's potentially $40 million worth of revenue with the existing businesses that are here.
Independently of retail?
Is, inclusive of retail.
Okay.
Independent of retail would be about 12 to 15 million less than that.
Okay.
And I have to be careful about, because we can't disclose sales figures for businesses, but it's not beyond the realm of possibility that there, that when, as the market matures and there's consolidation, commodification of the product, and it becomes, really, my personal belief is it will take almost a generation for it to really get to its full potential, that some of these manufacturers could be 100 million plus a year in gross revenues, and one percentage point of that, of course, is a million dollars.
Other questions? Seeing none, oh, Diane.
Just one. I know it may be premature to do before we have a taxing scheme in place. I'm just wondering, Chad, if you've thought about the estimated cost of supporting the cannabis industry?
The cost to actually administer a tax? Yeah, I haven't, I haven't put tremendous, we've had some conversations with the revenue consulting firms that specialize in that, and yes, there is a cost associated with the administration and the auditing that you really need to do in a more detailed way due to the cash-based nature of cannabis at present.
Right.
We have, we've discussed preliminarily proposals with, with the consulting firms, and it doesn't amount to, it's less than $100,000 a year. It's not a...
[laughs] It's the ghost of cannabis path.
[laughs] That was just me. So, the answer is I don't know yet.
Okay, yeah. But let's.
But not a huge number.
Let's come back to that when, when, after we.
Absolutely. We confirm that.
Yeah.
Okay, are there other questions for Chad? Seeing none, thank you, Chad. At this time, I'll entertain public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item will be afforded three minutes to do so. Any members of the public who wish to speak? Going once.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. First of all, thank you all for attending our opening reception. It was an absolute success, so I really want to thank you all for your support in the context of legalizing cannabis in the way that it needs to be. Our customer base and our revenue nearly doubled since then, so I'm very proud to be a part of the community and experience that success, and rest assured that we are 100% supportive of being taxed. Not a whole lot of businesses would have that position, but we are clearly happy to participate in that. I do agree with everything that Mr. Smalley said. We see eye to eye in the context of a reasonable ramp-up to get to a place that makes sense because taxing is a good scenario in the context of enforcement to deal with the illicit market, but also support the police department and other folks that need to be involved in ensuring that our industry clearly experiences absolute success. So, thank you so much, appreciate you considering all of these scenarios and a ramp-up to where we need to be in the context of taxation. Thank you.
Thank you, Nasser. Other speakers?
Hello, and good evening. Thank you all so much for having this discussion and meeting with all the businesses. Wanted to echo and share my appreciation for Chad and all his diligence and meeting with us and keeping us updated on this process. It's been extremely helpful, so thank you, Chad. And yes, we see eye to eye, too. I think all of the cannabis businesses here in Emeryville are sort of waiting on the edge of our seats to find out, and we, too, want to be taxed and want to support the city because we're incredibly grateful to be here and want to stay here. We love Emeryville, and it's been interesting to meet with other companies who'd like to be in Emeryville as they await to hear what the final words are, and we had a building next to us that was on the market, and there were some businesses, some larger distribution manufacturing businesses looking at the space and considering if Emeryville was going to be their home, and this came up, and they were unsure about the change, and I think that a low and slow, just to reiterate, is the way to go, and it will probably take longer than a year. It might take more than three years, but we'll get there, and the millions of dollars will hopefully come in for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers? Seeing none, public comment is closed. We'll bring it back for discussion. Council, there are three questions that are proposed on here. Do we feel like we need to discuss the city's vision for cannabis? I feel like we've discussed that kind of coherently over the last year and a half.
I think we can reiterate it.
Why don't, yes, and since I think we've been uniform, why don't we invite you to reiterate that?
Okay, yes, thank you. I think for a long time, since the previous council, actually, we've been talking about Emeryville as a regional hub for cannabis. I'd really love to see this city viewed as a green city, friendly to folks who want to purchase their cannabis or who are here for business purposes. So I think that's, you know, we weren't looking for just, although we invite them, we weren't looking for just mom-and-pop shops to come in, but we're really, as Emeryville is known for being a large retail space where people come to work, play, and shop, and we want them to do that in the context of visiting our cannabis businesses as well. So that's, yeah, that's my little spiel.
I think you got it right. Anyone wish to add on to that?
Perfect.
Okay, so let's, are folks ready to discuss initial tax rates this evening?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'd like to invite Councilmember Martinez to go first.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm, this is a really exciting time. We've been working on this issue for quite a while, and it's extremely satisfying to visit the businesses that have come to town and see in such a short amount of time how they've been able to put together their teams and really see their vision come through, and I'm really, really excited to partner with them to make this happen. In looking at the tax rates, you know, I was happy to take the lead on policy for the city in terms of lifting our ban and bringing the cannabis industry here and making sure that people had access to cannabis, both for recreational use and for medicinal use, but Mayor, you have taken a lot of leadership in revenue for the city, so I actually would like to defer to you. I do have, you know, greater thoughts in terms of, I definitely want to undercut our neighbors in Oakland and Berkeley, absolutely 100% across the board. I really like the Santa Rosa model, but I think that they're more of a, they're not rural, but we, I don't want to undersell the fact that we're at a literal crossroads, that we are on, we are in a well-traveled corridor. We're not a suburb. We are a city, and we're in between some big cities. So I see us falling in between Santa Rosa and our neighbors in Oakland and Berkeley, and I think we can come up with something that are, that will help promote growth in the industry.
Thank you. Member Donahue?
I totally agree with that. I think that we, we should recognize that we have a biotech industry here, and we should encourage testers to come to our city without necessarily burdening them, and that's been a real break on the industry overall, and I think this is something that could help us become a new product development area. If you can get tested quickly and efficiently, and you know how the tests go, I just believe that this burgeoning industry is going to be developing all kinds of new things, and it would be worth our while to not test, not tax testing as a category. I think that would serve us well in the future.
Thank you. Member Potts?
You know, it's interesting to me, the most important piece is these are jobs that have to stay in state, all the manufacturing, the testing, and so these are, if we can get good relationships right away and get businesses here, they're going to stay here. And I just, I, I'm fixated on that of, what can we do to get them here, make sure that they're in place, you know, because we are at a crossroads, we are a great location, but these are jobs that are going to stay in California, and Emeryville's in California, so we have that going for us. And, you know, I really do like Santa Rosa's model. You know, I was looking at LA's, I think I've made it very clear, I'm not, I'm not super into vice taxes, which is ultimately what this is, and so I, you know, the lower we can go on these, I just love the idea that it promotes jobs in Emeryville, you know, to Member Donahue's point about gross receipts, we're already taxing these businesses, so it's not as if they'll be here for free, and so, you know, I support any, I want to get this out early. I think that's really important to the businesses. Now is the time to strike, so I want to send a clear message that we are friendly, we are economical, and we have location, location, location. So, I'll stop talking now.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of the points made by my colleagues. I think that we are a great location. I prefer to start with a lower tax rate since the state multiplier effect comes in at 25%, which is probably why they've realized tax revenue is 80% below what was expected, and I think we would be wise to make sure we don't add to the burden. And I think the way we've structured it to have some flexibility based on what the state does is very wise, so I would be. So I would be supportive of looking at a tiered model like Santa Rosa, and also interested to see if you have some proposals, since I know you and Diane have been working really closely on this.
Okay, thank you. Chad, can I ask you to put something on the overhead? So I want to appreciate Councilmember Martinez for all her work on getting us to this point at the policy level, I have something for you to put up there in a second, at the policy level, which is what brought seven great cannabis businesses to Emeryville already, seeing us as a place that was welcoming and open for business right away. And I think to Councilmember Pats' excellent point, the time is now to solidify that and to keep people here. And I think, hopefully, the proposal I'm going to offer out as an initial discussion point to my colleagues this evening for tax rates will be one that matches up with what I've heard most of my colleagues say already this evening. So if you could put that up, and then I can refer to it from the screen.
Chad Pielmo has a light as well.
You can zoom that in. So I've kind of just dubbed it the 0123 Plan. And the, there's a rationale behind each of these, you could slide it up, there's a bullet you're missing at the bottom there. There you go. Thank you. So, starting at the bottom, the proposal here is to fix these tax rates for the first three years, which is an ample ramp up time before anything is reconsidered. And then really looking at some of the pieces that others have talked about, and Chad outlined in his presentation, I've spent a lot of time talking about tax rates with businesses, with folks at the state, and with other municipalities. And we, as Councilmember Pats really appropriately said, we have location, location, location. And so we have some desirability in relation to others who have a model that's similar to or not too variant from this. Santa Rosa has variated rates across different segments of the cannabis industry, but the idea here being that we can create an entire vertical economic system within the cannabis industry here within Emeryville and actually promote sustainability between the various types of cannabis businesses. So you'll see on there medicinal, I've put out a 0%. That is the one that I would say is the subject to most discussion, perhaps, not feeling a strong opinion on that, but medicinal products, I think, shouldn't be taxed. I think that people are already getting taxed enough for medicines that they need. But you'll see, testing is in both 0 and 1%, and what I'm proposing is that at a baseline, testing be a 1% tax bracket, but that there be a rebate available to businesses that test products made in Emeryville. So one of the challenges that I heard is some of our manufacturing partners here in the city and other places are facing, as Chad noted, a shortage of available testing companies that can test the products to ensure that they go out onto the shelf, which makes them marketable and sells the product to our benefit at a tax level of gross receipts. But products are expiring before they reach the shelf for a number of reasons, and due to the high demand for testing services, the cost of testing is very high. And if we want to incentivize people to open or locate testing businesses in this region, which is the only segment of the cannabis industry we don't have in town today, I believe that we should offer a rebate, a tax rebate, similar to what we do for our small business tax, business license tax program, that essentially allows for an effective zero tax rate on a testing of a product that was manufactured here in Emeryville, which encourages relationships to be formed between a testing company and Emeryville manufacturers, and it provides a symbiotic relationship and a financial incentive for both to locate here. Beyond that, I think that distribution at a 1% tax rate is a very competitive rate. That's a rate that's used for communities farther away from the Bay Area's center than ours, but when you look at the way Emeryville is built in terms of architecture and building structures, it is a natural locus for distribution facilities, and distribution centers have the opportunity to be one of the highest-producing and highest-grossing businesses in the industry. And so in terms of how we compete with some of our larger neighbors, I think that a 1% rate would secure some of the most financially stable businesses here within Emeryville to operate distribution centers, which I do believe in the long term will be the most profitable of the segments that we have here in the industry. I propose a 2% manufacturing rate, which I believe is competitive, and I think is, although slightly higher than some of a couple other cities that are being competitive, like we're trying to be, due to the geographic location, I think 2% is an extremely reasonable rate for having the location that you have here in Emeryville as opposed to Santa Rosa, where you have to consider the offset of transportation costs for the delivery of a product from a place that's 50 miles away from the center of the bay. And then finally, at the 3% rate, retail and dispensary, this is, I put an asterisk behind it because this would be in lieu of the current community benefits agreements that both of the dispensaries pay. It would be a straight-up 3% tax on grocery receipts, which I think net benefits the city in the long run, because I believe that the community benefits in the long term, while more flexible perhaps in some respects, and would do better in lean years. I think for the long term and predictability of the industry, it's better to have a flat rate. And I've couched delivery under that because I think those two segments of the industry go hand in hand, and it would be advantageous to keep them at the same rate. So I have a lot of other things I could say about this and why they were proposed this way, but I'd be more interested in hearing from my colleagues at this point. So I'd like to return to Councilmember Martinez.
I just have a question for you, Mayor. For delivery, what if you're getting medicinal delivered?
Well, that's why I put medicinal kind of up there, because I think that it overlaps with some of these things, and to Chad's earlier point about we didn't make a distinction in our organs, we could simply remove reference to medicinal at all, and then it would be the applicable rate depending on whether you're using delivery or delivery dispensary or any of these other segments. It would be, it would defeat the purpose of having a lower rate for a senior who's on a fixed income who uses it for a medicinal purpose, but I'm not, I'm not sure, and maybe, Chad, you can answer, whether we could separate that out. I don't think we could. I think it'd be very hard to do and enforce.
Yeah, that was my immediate reaction. I mean, I'm positive there's a way to do this, because a lot of other communities have done it, but our current, it would be a new thing, because our current licensure is just, it's cannabis is cannabis. I am concerned that what that does, and this is just, you know, an immediate hot take reaction, I haven't really thought this through, is it incentivizes folks to package things as if they are medical, even if they maybe aren't? And that, so trying to tease out the legitimacy of whether or not something was done for medical or...
Enforcement.
Yeah, it's an enforcement sort of challenge, and so that was my concern. But I am working under the assumption of whatever we discuss, we're going to conduct further analysis and bring that back for consideration.
We get to have a look at the feasibility of it.
Yeah, that would be good for you to take a look at.
For sure.
How that would work. Possibly a rebate for people who are buying medicinal?
You could. It would be harder to...
I don't know how that would...
It would be harder to rebate something on delivery than on grocery receipts. Do you have a comment or response to her?
Yeah, I just, I see medical or medicinal being a smaller segment. I think the cost to get your prescription, which is only good for a year, and I don't know if that has changed under the new statute, is a one-time lump sum of, I think somewhere I read $100, $150.
Forty to 100.
I'm sorry? Forty?
Forty to 100.
Yeah. So, so that one time out of pocket versus paying this tax is going to, is more difficult for people on fixed incomes than I think they're, I agree with you wanting not to hit them with an extra 3%, but I think that's less noticeable than hitting that. And the same thing, I'm curious how long retailers keep doing the medicinal paperwork and all of that, particularly on the delivery piece. So I, I'm not, I'm not so worried about that impact.
The reason why I like the 0% for medicinal, and I don't, you know, it's, what my goal would be, would be to, we have seniors in our community who use cannabis as a medicine. And more and more, I'm talking to seniors who are going check to check, month to month, and I've had folks approach me at the senior center, for instance, and say, can you have a task force to talk about, like, any benefits that the city can provide, you know, where, with my utilities, what discounts are available to seniors, like, and everything adds up for these folks. So I'm just, I'm looking out for those people, and they may be few and far between in the greater scheme of the industry, but if you read Yelp reviews for dispensaries, there's a lot of upset when taxes affect when it's recreational past and people's bills started going way up, and it's an inconvenience to some, and it's a major inconvenience for a lot of fixed income seniors, I would say, who rely on cannabis.
Can I ask a clarifying question of Chad? I'm not sure if you know this. I believe there is a partial exemption for retail sales for medicinal at a state level. So the excise tax of 15% cumulatively applies, but the 10% is not. So they typically pay 15% currently in state taxes, right?
The state sales tax is 15%. The excise tax is nine and a half?
Nine and a half.
So the excise tax is 15.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So it's, they pay about, so they end up paying 15%, but not the additional 10.
See, that, I would have to go back and look at this.
Yeah, the industry experts. Confirming.
Because this, there was a point in time where this was in flux, because if you had a state-issued card, you didn't, you couldn't assess tax on those transactions, but I don't know if that situation still persists, because, and it's your pleasure as to whether you want.
Yeah. You want me to invite someone?
Well, the math perspective of that then forks out the difference to making it worth it to get a medical marijuana card if we're basing off of the $60 statewide average, which I Googled real quickly, would be, you have to pay six, be spending $600 a year on marijuana for that to be worth it. And if we add in the tax locally of 3%, then that would be, you have to spend $460 for that to be worth it, which, divided by 12, is like 38 a month, which is not that much to spend on marijuana, guys.
It's probably not, especially for the number of people.
So I think it's a really, really tiny...
If you want us to look at it, still, we can.
Just wanted to put into a numbers perspective.
There's no harm in looking at it if you want.
If we did, if we were to look at it, the way I'd love to see it in the next staff report when you come back is, and I ask for this at East Bay Community Energy too, a sample bill. So let's say I'm a senior with a state card, and then, and what does my bill look like with a...
Versus the alternative.
Yep.
I'm, I really love where this is coming from, and I really appreciate that. I want to go back to my original argument is, we're looking at amortizing the cost over each purchase versus lump sums, and for people on fixed incomes, this becomes the bigger challenge, is coming up with the initial capital, even if it's only $60 at one time. The, that becomes the bigger challenge than the, you know, 3% on $100, you know, coming up with $3, so you pay 103 instead of $100 for your bi-weekly product.
It's the capital asset.
Yeah, and so that's my concern of like, I'm, you know, I'd much, I'm going to leave it at that, because I love where this is coming from, but I just, I just don't know how practical it is.
Right, well, I think it offers the opportunity to have a discount if you can get the $60, rather than just na off or anything.
Right, no, I hear that, but I...
So it's a net gain.
Well, actually, so a better solution would be for us to offer a rebate to Emeryville seniors of the $60 upfront and have a 3% tax.
And that's the win.
Oh my God, we would be the most in Emeryville. That's really peak.
I really feel like if there's a senior in the city who has to, I think both of you are making excellent points, but if we're trying to create an enforcement-friendly mechanism...
Yeah.
The reality is that we should pay the $60 in the form of one-time requests, and it's paid out of the fund that the tax from the grocery receipts goes to, and you think about, even if it's 100 seniors, and we're paying $6,000 out of our grocery receipts tax, but they pay the 3%, we don't have to worry about implementing a rebate on a tax for a delivery, which is a hard thing.
And we do a similar, we take people's receipts for their cab rides, and if you look at the impact of that, for that program, which is an important program, it's really low to our budget, and it's really low for enforcement, and it's, someone just provides a receipt.
Yeah, so how do people feel about that proposed solution?
Can I clarify what the proposal is? So it would be, we pay the $60 for seniors who want to get a medicinal card.
They'd apply for, they'd pay their card?
Yeah.
And apply for a rebate, and we would issue them a check from the grocery receipts fund. We'd budget a certain amount per year, it'd be a small amount, to cover that.
So then do we keep it at 0% medicinal or keep it at 3% and save them?
0% medicinal, but it's 3% for a delivery.
Even if you're getting medicinal delivered, because that's too hard to parse?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my answer, but why do you?
I think that's great.
I think that's, to Christian's point, that's the point is...
They can, they can use the fund and take the cab, and then turn in the receipt for the cab.
Have a fun Emery go-around ride.
Each quarter, they could take a cab.
Scott, do you have thoughts on this?
I like the ease of bureaucratic process for this suggestion a lot, so...
So beyond just the medicinal thing which we raised, do people feel that this is a fair structure, or they have issues with where things are categorized, or why? Christian?
So I like the concept of this, and I was, I looked at this and thought it was LA's model. It was interesting, you picked up Santa Rosa's, but for me, this is sort of very similar to when I was looking at LA's model. For me, I'd love to see it, and I get it, this is in that sweet spot. I'm always for lower, I thought, particularly on testing, even for non-Emeryville products. I think that, you know, I'd love to see it even down at half a percent. You know, manufacturing, I'd love to take it down to 1%, just because, again, I'd like to keep these nice and low. I think we're going to see plenty of income, and then finally, I'm not for fixed rates for three years. I do understand their appeal. I just don't, I don't like to lock us in when we don't have to. It's one of the things I didn't want in the ballot measure, and I was glad it wasn't there, and I'm not looking to do it. You know, I don't want to look to lock us in. I feel like we're not going to change them, but I always like to have that flexibility. We may want to, we may have downward pressure, we may have upward pressure, but I don't like, I don't love being locked in for three years. So those are my thoughts. I don't think I'm going to get anywhere on the lowering the rates, but I do, I would prefer not to lock ourselves in, so we can see how they're working, and maybe a year from now, we need to revisit it, or two years from now. And again, that could be downward pressure, it could be that we are, we are too low. So I just want to throw that out there. I also think the economy's going to be a very different place in 16 months.
Well, I'll tell you why I recommended three years. So I recommended three years because, a couple reasons. One, the federal administration will change in two years.
Yeah.
Two, two, why did you, don't jinx me, Charlie. Two, I think that if you are at the point of, you are looking at whether or not to relocate here, because one of the goals of this plan is to incentivize other businesses to relocate here, you will not incentivize anybody to relocate here if it can be changed every six months. And so you have to give people a degree of predictability as to how long this rate is good for, and give them the opportunity to do all the other financial pieces that come with relocating a business and operating it in your city, which includes acquiring property, includes labor in some cases, manufacturing equipment, there's all this other capital and upfront costs that come with relocating, and if you are going to tell people, yeah, but we could change the rate at any day, I would not relocate my business here. I think for all the good that the plan offers, and I appreciate you saying you would go lower, I think this rate is targeted, these rates are targeted at, you are getting the, you're paying a small premium, even your half percent. I have contemplated that, because I, my gut is a little bit lower, but I believe that the half percent I've added to each of these from where my gut is, is that you got location, 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 you pay a little more than you pay in Santa Rosa or someplace over the hills in the middle of a dust bowl. So I do think that the rates, and I think that the other thing is that, one of the things that people want, especially when members of the industry talk to each other, is they want real clarity as to what is the rate and what is the program, and this is as simple as 0123, right? And you're in the bucket, one of those places, and so not doing half percents and not doing more complicated programs and having a simple, straight-up rebate option to, that does an incentive on the backend for the one sector that we don't have. I think this makes a really clear, it's, we're showing clarity, but we're also showing a degree of simplicity to businesses, that this is exactly what we're doing, this is where you fall on that chart, and we aren't going to change that for three years to give you the opportunity to come in, establish yourself. And I think that those things have to go together, because I think without one of those two pieces, the other, the goal of this, which I think we all, I think, agreed to about trying to bring people in and get them early, you know, you said it well, striking soon, I think that that goal can be lost if we don't create that rate fixed. Yes?
And I think absent having lower rates than these, I actually think these are a good target rate for us right now, but that timeline can provide, you know, maybe what's lacking in not being able to make those rates go lower. Later tonight, we're going to be talking about our budget adjustments, and I'm sure you all read the staff report, sales tax is not what we expected. So we've got revenue coming into the city that we're, that we were expecting that's not happening in, for storefront retail, non-cannabis. So I do think that we need to find the very sweet spot, as much as I'd like to go lower than this, I think this is the right thing to do. And additionally, I think that giving some three-year assurances to the industry, my hope is that it would help us to develop some properties in a, you know, that would support quality manufacturing and quality lab space specifically, because we have some parcels in this town that are zoned perfectly for this type of industry use, and in order for a developer to get the financing that would be... And in order for a developer to get the financing that would be required for very expensive lab space upfront, it's a huge capital outlay, I think having the assurance that this rate would be solid for three years could make the difference for folks. And we could see some major things happening, I think, as a result of these decisions that we're making tonight, or direction that we're giving.
Others wish to comment?
I really like the plan. I think it really is encouraging to a business predictability point of view, and it's also saying that we are taking an approach that is thoughtful, and we're valuing our location. And I think that being the cheapest doesn't necessarily mean being the most desirable. So we're not the cheapest, but we are the most consistent and thoughtful. I think that's attractive. So I think this looks really good.
Others over here?
I really like this breakdown. It, I think, compared to our neighbors, and even looking at our immediate neighbors, Berkeley, who recently lowered their adult-use retail rate to 5%, we're still coming in below that. Oakland's got a ballot initiative up to give the council authority to lower theirs, but they're lowering from five for medicinal and 10 for recreational. So I think this still puts us in a very attractive spot for both businesses and customers. I like it a lot, and I like the medicinal thing we worked out with rebates for seniors. That is just such an Emeryville thing to do. I adore it.
It's the way we do things. Chad?
Mayor Bowers, may I ask just one clarifying question?
You may.
For testing, where you have 0% with a rebate for Emeryville products and 1% for non-Emeryville products. If you had a testing lab that tested both Emeryville and non-Emeryville products, would the rebate be proportional to the percentage of Emeryville products? Or how would that work?
Yeah, so essentially, in that, they'd keep a separate ledger, and they'd have one ledger that is all the grocery receipts for Emeryville-based businesses, and they'd have one ledger for the others, and they'd have, they'd produce both. And so maybe they have $3 million in grocery receipts and $1 million is Emeryville businesses. The rebate can be applied for, for those that they can document that are Emeryville-based. Chad?
I wanted to make sure I was clear on the 0% medical, because that's distinct, right, from the rebate you were talking about for seniors. That's a separate thing? You still also want 0% grocery receipts on medical sales?
So you could clarify something that came up as a question for me. So if, to Diane's point, if I purchase a medicinal product and I purchase it via delivery, am I paying 0 or 3 under the way you're reading this?
Under the way...
If I'm seeking delivery for a medicinal product, is my rate 3 or 0? That's the question I had.
I think it could be read both ways.
That's the piece of clarification I think we need. So I think that, I think that what we're doing here is we're probably striking the word medicinal from the sheet, because as Christian pointed out, it is a small amount, but we're going to ask you to do the investigating that Diane looked at, and we're going to simply do a rebate on the front end of the cost to get the annual card or whatever it is. Yeah, so that they have that rebate upfront.
I wanted to point out, in that same vein, that the two storefront dispensaries have as part of their, the community benefits go beyond the cash. So, and I won't be able to quote exactly the qualifications of these, but both of them have a component that provides a discount to veterans, in some cases seniors. And I could go back and review that and bring that back to you, because it might also get to the same result.
Right. And so I think, I think if you could do me a favor and just strike the word medicinal from the page up here so everyone's seeing on the overhead, because I think what we should do is, we need to tackle the issue still. To Diane's well-made point, I think the best way to do it is to look at where the leverage points are most appropriate for ensuring that we don't price out somebody who needs the benefit for medicinal purposes, especially a fixed-income resident. And so it could be that we pay the card upfront as a rebate. It could be that we engage in non-legal, non-regulatory relationships with our two dispensaries about, hey, would you voluntarily offer a senior program, which doesn't require us to prescribe anything, and it saves us the whole problem altogether. And they simply say, you know what, an Emeryville resident or a senior who, you know, is otherwise-carded for this purpose, we offer a special discount. And it could be that it's simply voluntary. Not everything has to be prescribed in the statute. A lot of, the goal of this is to develop that relationship within the sector and the industry to promote that. And that is not just in the vertical chain of cannabis businesses, but also with the city. And so I think we're a small enough city that we can have that conversation, I think. Christian?
So if we strike medicinal from the 0%, we shouldn't be encouraging people to get the card on our dime.
Wait, 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 no, because then that saves them 10% in state taxes, so it still actually saves them a lot of money.
10% of state taxes.
Yeah. So it saves them a lot more if we do that. And then it takes the money away from the state and not us.
That's also true.
Just...
Okay. So before we get called from the government...
Can I interject a proposal here?
You may, you may. Yeah. I think this is a wonderful, I think we stick with this plan. I can get behind it. I've made my peace. I can get behind this plan with a stricken medical. But I think, I think it's a great idea to go through non-governmental means and bring this to the senior center at the next committee on...
Commission on Aging.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure I had that right. Commission on Aging. I bet the senior center can work out some fun practices with the local dispensaries, and we can then come back and maybe grant them...
I can't wait for the state to allow pop-ups.
So...
We will innovate in that space.
Innovate, lovely.
We will innovate in that space by inviting input from seniors as to perhaps a non, so we can move this forward and give predictability to all of our partners in the cannabis industry, but...
And we'll disrupt it later.
But disrupt it later with, hey, let's be friends and figure out how to help some seniors in town. So is there any other discussion on this item? Staff, are there any other questions?
Yes, one more. So the footnote relating to ending the community benefit obligation, so these community benefits are blended in that, so for one of them, 1% of grocery receipts is put into a fund, and so they have to document that. And 70% of that is coming to the city. So that, I think, is clear, that that's what you want to undo.
Right.
But that 30% goes to community organizations, or at least that's the way the commitments have been drawn up. And the same goes for the other dispensaries, 2%, half of that money comes to the city, no strings attached. The other half goes to the community foundation, and they fund Emeryville nonprofits. I'm presuming that you only want to deal with the cash-to-city portion of those community benefits.
Well, to clarify, right now, we take 1% grocery receipts, and then we divide it 70% and 30%.
For one of the dispensaries, that is what we do, yes.
Okay, so under this, we'd be taking 3%. So the benefit that's the 30% of that, that was covered to community-based organizations, the city council can then distribute it as we wish.
Okay, that's the clarification I was looking for. And that, that's what I'll bring back.
Okay, member down here.
We did not address cultivation. Is that because we're not...
We don't have it in our statute. In our ordinance, we don't allow for it.
Okay.
Yes.
Last item was, there was discussion on locking the rates for three years. I just want to be clear that that's mostly symbolic, because, right, because the way that ordinance is written, that it's going to the ballot, you could change it with a simple majority vote. I think it's, I think there is value in sending that signal to the industry. I think that's really what's being requested. But I wanted to be clear that that was the situation.
So do you, this is a study session, so we don't need to make any motions on this, but I want to just confirm, everyone is in agreement on this proposal with everything that's on the sheet, Scott?
Yes.
Diane, yes. Christian, Ellie. So you have unanimous direction on this item?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, we will be bringing back a resolution to the council to this effect, I guess, in December, assuming that the motion, that the measure passes in November?
So I would like to ask, actually, that, I asked the city attorney this question. Can we adopt a resolution that is contingent upon the passage of a ballot measure? And if so, can we do this on October 30th?
To answer your first question, yes, you can adopt a resolution that's contingent on the passage of the ballot measure, assuming that staff is able to do the research that was requested and put together...
Chad, can you have this by October 30th?
Yeah.
Yes? It would give us, it would make it very clear to the voters, and I think that's important, that the voters who go to the polls on the sixth have had the opportunity to see exactly what we're doing. And it also fulfills the commitment we made to the businesses, that we would have this before the public, before there was a vote, so that they knew that we were not going to just put a 6% tax on them. So does everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:45. The meeting is adjourned.